Okay, I have seven o'clock. Let's come to order, please. Welcome to our special meeting of the Town of Los Gatos Council for December 12th. Could I have a roll call, please?
Thank you and good evening. Councilmember Marcia Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Mariko Sayak.
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Spector.
Here.
Vice Mayor Steve Leonardis.
Here.
Mayor and Chair Rob Rennie.
Here. Okay, next we'll do the pledge allegiance, so please join, please stand and join me for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all. That's exactly the pledge music. All right, so next on the agenda, closed session report. Mr. Schultz, please.
Yes, good evening. Prior to tonight's regular session, councilmen in closed session to discuss real property negotiations. No action was taken that requires reporting under the Brown Act.
Thank you. Next, we have verbal communications. If anybody would like to address us for three minutes on something that's not on our agenda tonight, now is the time to do that. And I did just get three cards for verbal, so we'll start with Mark Brodsky.
Tonight I'm going to talk about Cupertino. They had a series of seminars this summer, and they had a speaker by the name of Don Whedon, a planner, and he spoke on something called Santa Clara Valley 3.0. Santa Clara Valley 1.0 being the Garden of, Valley of the Heart's Delight, or the orchard. Santa Clara Valley 2.0 being our Silicon Valley, and here we are choked on our success and with the random infill and very difficult times getting around and living. But he talked about 3.0 and what 3.0 would be driven by, and what it's driven by is a changing demographics. It will allow for building urbanization, islands of urbanization in our sea of suburbia. Density, strategic density is not necessarily a bad word if you want suburban living. In fact, it may bleed to be the solution to congestion and the solution to the housing problems we're dealing with with future elderly. We are aging, and I hate to admit it. You know, I try to look good, but, and I'm downsizing. And when they worry about, oh, the schools are going to be filled up if we densify, no, I'm doing more of a problem than people of the baby boomer generation because we downsize, we moved out, and a family of three and soon to be four moves on in right into our school district. Strategic density, you know, provides a place where maybe we can build the magnet schools that we have no other place to build. Density creates destination for transit apps. When you're thinking about what will happen with one place or another place in the valley, with enough density, you can create the transportation loops that we talked about over the years, but never had enough sufficient volume and intensity to justify paying for them. A density breeds creativity. You know, the owners die who own a lot of the properties, their kids take over, they hire real estate managers, and next thing you know, we're losing another CB, something like a CB Hannigan's or another. Where are the small shops? Where will they go? We are Rinconada de los Gatos. We're the corner of the cats. We're in the strategic corner of this valley. As valley goes to Silicon Valley 3.0, this will be a very high property, important area, and we can have our superb suburban cake and enjoy it, too. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Brodsky? Seeing none, thank you. Okay, so next up, I have Kyra Dennison.
Hi, I'm here to talk about composting. I've noticed that recently the town does not have a community compost or a place that we can send compost to. San Francisco has a thing that you can send compost to where you put it in your green bin, and it sends it to Recology where they compost it and create compost to be used around the Bay Area, but we do not participate in that. And I was thinking about how we could implement composting into our town and into what we are as a green, going into a green town. Composting is really important because 40% of food produced in the U.S. goes uneaten, and 97% of that goes into landfills. We can change that by reducing our waste by recycling and composting, and composting can generally be a better thing for our town, and I was hoping we could reach that.
All right, thank you. Any questions? Let's start with Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, since you're looking this way. What suggestion do you have as to what we, Los Gatos, can do to gain your goal of composting?
Well, Recology, the one that San, the thing that San Francisco uses, has an outreach program where they go to different cities in the Bay Area and they can collect their compost. I know we work with West Valley, but I was wondering if we could implement that. Or we could have our own compost as a town, which would be a little bit harder to maintain, but also would be better in the long run because our account can work as a community to support it. We could have drop-offs in, say, like, the farmer's market or outside major grocery stores, and then we can even have community members pay a small amount to take some of the finished compost home, which would, like, help the community become interested in the compost.
Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. I just wanted to make some comments. I'm on the Board of the West Valley Collection Recycling, and I know that we are looking at some options for composting moving forward because it is a state law. Where the diversion rate must increase, and I don't know the exact percentage, so forgive me, but if staff could get the speaker's information and I could perhaps pass it along to our manager of the board, and then they can get them details on that. I don't know what we can do as a community in the interim, but I think it's right around the corner as far as curbside bins for composting that will be coming. So thank you for coming tonight and speaking.
Thank you.
Thank you for that extra information. I see no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, I have Jacque Vanneta.
Good evening, Council, Mayor. This year's most important footnote is footnote one that essentially said that if the OPEB is booked in this year's statement, we would have to book a 12.1 OPEB expense. It won't be booked into the 2017 CAFER, but it will be reflected during Mr. Rennie's term. So you start out with a $12.1 million deficit. The importance of knowing this is that instead of $6.7 million that you think you have is that you actually will start out with a $5.4 million expense. I believe that this has been pointed out by Mr. Conway, but I think it needs a red flashing light beside it. It's tough for you guys to be going through these extensive CAFERS and try to realize what's in all of these footnotes. The first thing I want to make sure that you understand about this graph, and this one is just showing you the rate of, the rate of increase of safety and miscellaneous over the five years from 2018 to 2023. This graph is set up so that you are able to see what we have recorded in our CAFER from 2011 to 2017. The high bar on the right-hand side is what our liability would be if we were booking 6.5% as the discount rate. 6.5% is the realistic rate. We're using a fake rate of 7.5%. We've been going deeper and deeper into the hole because we use this screwy rate. We should be changing our whole financial system around to work off this 6.5% rate. If you look at the attachment that I gave you in the addendum, you'll see that there was an article there by the Calpers Board that said that we should be using 6%, or if you want to check further, you can check with their consultant, Wilshire Consulting, who recommended 6.21. There's absolutely no reason for us to use 7.5, much less 7%. I am told that we run a conservative government, and I'm going to have to skip here. I see I'm down on time. What bothers me is the expected rate of increases for safety and maintenance, as you saw. The interest in service costs for the past three years, just for the miscellaneous expenses in 2015, $10,000; 2016, $10,600; 2017, $11,100. Over three years, that's $31,924.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mr. Vanneta? Okay, thank you. All right, I have no other cards for public comment. Is this public comment? Okay, so Ms. Risto?
Hi, sorry about that. Maria Risto, 85 Broadway. I'm speaking as a resident, but also as a stakeholder in a meeting I was at the other day. I just want to alert the town, I'm sure the council's aware of this, that the town is undergoing a feasibility study for a school bus service. And what people should be aware of is that there's going to be surveys going out to school families to look at how they feel about busing, and the point of this whole project would be, it's a pilot program, and it's for congestion relief. So this is not busing for all students. This is busing to relieve congestion in congested areas of town and look at how do we take certain select areas of students off the road. So moving forward, this is a study that'll look at, is this something the community can get behind? Do we have a funding source for it? And how do we make it work? So more information will be coming out in January, but we're looking forward to people's collaboration and interest. These are modern safe school buses with seat belts. These are routes that will improve traffic in town, and this is for students that can't walk or bike to school. So when you think about a bus, think about anywhere from 35 to 60 cars going through a funnel and being crammed into a school bus. We can take a lot of cars off this way. Thank you.
Okay, I see one question. Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this pilot or program that you're talking about akin to the Danville Busing Program?
Correct.
And I was under the impression with regard to Danville that the parents paid for the service or contributed to the service, but you seem to be talking about some other kind of funding.
Okay, I did not explain it well, and more will be coming out, but this is the same kind of thing. So in Danville, that was paid for specifically with a county tax, Measure J, that was specific toward the school busing, I believe, and the parents contributed maybe half where people are on the route. In this case, we're looking for Measure B money. There may be other funding sources, and specifically toward congestion relief, and then where the routes are selected, the families that could ride it would also be paying toward it.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions. Thank you, Ms. Risto. Okay, so now, seeing no other, no other, nobody else coming forward for verbal communication, we'll close verbal communication portion, and we'll move into our regularly scheduled for verbal communication? Okay. All right, go ahead, Mr. Picrow.
Thank you. I think this is appropriate time. Tell me if I'm wrong. I wanted to say a word about priority setting, which I think you'll be discussing, but not on your agenda, which is in the area of senior issues. And so if I may, just take three minutes on that, please. And what I'd like to do is encourage you to consider taking up long-range planning in the area of senior issues during the coming year. Now, you've, for example, you've done this in, I think, a very wise way in financial matters for the town and dealing with such things as the pensions and long-term financial stability. I think 10-year view should be taken, and I think it's perhaps a good time to do that. That follows on to the Age Friendly Cities Initiative Task Force that you had last year, which was a two-year horizon. I think that with the older population being about 5,000 citizens here now in Los Gatos and expected to grow from the 17% to maybe 25% in the next few decades, that it's a good time to do that. And while there are many issues, and I understand from, like, affordable move-down housing to transportation to social isolation, I think there are a couple issues which make this worth thinking about now with perhaps a committee or task force you might, if you so chose. One thing is that I think a town senior volunteer coordinator would be a wise thing to have, something like you had here in town about a decade ago, and that this person might be able to leverage volunteer service, volunteers in the town, service providers, service clubs, businesses, and also take advantage of grant opportunities coming up, which we're not doing now. A second particular motivation for me to make this suggestion to you tonight, and thank you for listening, is that I think it's worth taking a long-term look at an adult rec center and the contracts, contract arrangements with that. I know I've some, heard some concern that the Los Gatos Saratoga Recreation Contract you have with them may not be sustainable financially on the long term. I think that would be a concern for us. I think, thinking about a community center from a long-term perspective, just like you did for the library, which created a crown jewel for, in my opinion, for Los Gatos, would be a good thing to start now. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Picrow? I see none. Thank you. Now I will close the verbal communications again, and we'll move on to a staff report for our other business, which is going to be priority setting session.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we'll be talking about priority setting for 18, 19, all the way through 2021. So we do look at a two- or three-year horizon. I do want to walk you through some of the materials that have been provided to you, and as you can see, you have the full complement of town staff for all departments to answer your questions as we go along. Last year, actually, it was earlier this year, the council affirmed our core goals of public safety, community character, good governance, fiscal stability, civic enrichment, and quality public infrastructure. These core goals essentially inform the strategic priorities, but they also, very importantly, inform our operating and capital budget, and you'll see that the resources and the staff attention is distributed accordingly. Attachment three in your packet contains the work plans of the departments, and you'll see that 90% of the core services provided by any department are really basic services that go to all Los Gatos community members. Also in the work plan are identification of upcoming items for this next year based on state mandates, expected priorities from council from past budgets, as well as other materials that we know that we're going to have to do. Very importantly in those work plans is the general plan update, and in early February, we're hoping that the council will spend some time with us to help us identify what are the issues and focus for the next general plan update and what our community engagement will be. This is an important opportunity to not only think long-term about our changing demographics and what our population needs will be, but also about things like sustainability and environmental goals that the council might have. So that's coming up, and that really does involve all of our town departments. Of course, CDD would be taking the lead, community development, but it also is significant workload for our town attorney as well as parks and public work. So as we think about what's coming up in the next year, we've identified that given the progress we've made to date with strategic priorities, we have capacity to add about five or so new priorities. So we want to walk through with you the current status of where we are with priorities. You may choose that some of them are no longer important, and perhaps that would break free some capacity for new ideas. Up on the poster behind me is the list of the completed priorities. This is also in attachment one for those of you who might be following along at home or in the materials provided. You'll see that we completed some great things this past year, and this is just since the end of January. Obviously, the bicycle pedestrian master plan was a huge accomplishment, and adopting new smoking regulations was also wonderful, the age-friendly designation. So we've, we've done a lot in the last year or so, and many thanks to the council. Ongoing is another box, and we felt that it was important to call these priorities out separately. And the reason is, is that the staff has been giving, and the council has been really working hard on these issues. And this includes the pension and other post-employment benefit issue that was mentioned in public comments. This has taken the time and thought of our council finance committee as well as the council, and some very proactive work, and this work is ongoing. We're, this isn't going to be one of those issues that we can say, okay, we've put it in a box and we're done. It's really going to take continued attention, so we, we believe it needs to be acknowledged as something that is strategic, and we want to continue to work on. Similarly, Measure B, despite the litigation, we are moving ahead to position our town to make sure we get our fair share of this money. And transportation issues are central to the quality of life of our town, and again, this is going to be an ongoing, long-term commitment, and we want to demonstrate that commitment by showing it in the ongoing box. Our bicycle pedestrian improvements, we've started to look at other funding mechanisms and sources, and again, we think this is going to be important. And then lastly, the regional interoperability allows our police department and public works department to collaborate and communicate across agencies throughout the Bay Area in the event of an earthquake or other natural disaster. We've made our steps towards, excuse me, purchasing the equipment, and then our ongoing commitment to continue to collaborate across boundaries. So essentially, with the completed items and the ones that are really kind of fundamental to us as a town, that leaves the progress that we've made in other areas. Almond Grove Streets, as you know, is fully funded, and that's in our budget. It's in our CIP. We wanted to acknowledge it here, but again, it's, it's almost in that ongoing column, but at some point, we will be finished. We're very close to finishing the North Forty Specific Plan Amendments, and we think it's to the town's benefit to conclude that. We've done some ordinance work, and there's more ahead, and then there's other priorities. Certain items, such as downtown parking, has several components, such as the garage that our ad hoc committee is working on, as well as the work of our Transportation and Parking Commission. There are certain other ideas where I think we need some guidance from the council. For example, is there a utility in the town doing a complete streets policy? And staff can answer any questions that you have on that one. And then similarly, should we continue to carry the alcohol policy just given prior council discussion on that? So those are some areas where you might want to think about cutting. In your documents are, is attachment four, and that is about six pages of new ideas, ideas that we heard in the mayor's acceptance speech, ideas that we've heard from council, from various committee meetings or other conversations, ideas from our community, and lastly, ideas from town staff. This is a menu from which you can select. Of course, you're not limited to it. You may hear other ideas through public testimony, but what we'd like to do is to have you identify of these ideas and others, what are the big ones that you would like us to move forward with? Because tonight, we're proposing a two-step process where you identify each council member approximately three new ideas for us to consider, and then we would bring back to you on February 20th a scope and a budget and a workload assessment to help you decide, okay, now that we have that data, which are the ones that we're actually going to build into our 18, 19 budgets. So tonight, we're not going to talk finances, but really, we really want to hear from you about what are the specific deliverables and outcomes that you would like to see with strategic priorities. We've also included a memorandum from our town attorney regarding prioritized ordinances. This evening, you'll have an opportunity to provide us input as to whether you think those ordinances need to be in a different priority order. Again, we've got the staff from all of the departments here to answer your questions, and we look forward to the discussion and direction this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Privetti. So do we want to run through any of the ideas, or we're just going to wait for council questions on these?
We're available for council questions if you'd like to ask them now. You know, we did not list them in any priority order in terms of the potential new strategic priorities in attachment four. If there's clarifications needed, we're, the team is here to answer them for you.
Okay, so let's go ahead and see if there's questions from council. Then we'll do, take input from the public, and then we'll come back and discuss more and get to our, I guess, our three-each vote kind of thing. to our, I guess, our three-each vote kind of thing. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a question maybe for Mr. Morley. It's page six of six of potential new priorities, Winchester Boulevard Master Plan. And what I'm trying to understand is that, the concept there, is that an infrastructure plan in order to position ourselves for Measure B funds, or is that more like Los Gatos Boulevard Plan of what we want it to look like that you had in mind?
Thank you for the question. Matt Morley, Director of Parks and Public Works. It'd be a combination of the two. So, as we're looking at development projects that come along on that corridor, it'd be nice to have some guidelines on what we're looking for long-term on that entire stretch of roadway. In addition, there may be some opportunities as we're looking at Measure B priorities or other larger funding opportunities and grants to start to fund some of the corridor projects, the complete street projects, the stormwater management projects. So, we just wanted to put it out there as something that's on our radar as sort of a fresh untouched corridor that has a lot of potential. It is an area where we get a significant number of questions in terms of additional facilities for bicycles and pedestrians, for kids walking to Dave's Elementary School, things like that. So, it does come up periodically, multiple times a year towards us, so we wanted it out there on the radar for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. And any other questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Sack.
Okay, thank you. This is with regard to the staff report. Under Economic Vitality, it just talks about streamlining. And I know that in the past, we've had various discussions of streamlining, but were there any specific areas that staff had identified that required some streamlining? I know through the Policy Committee, we've identified the deciding bodies, and trying to look at what is dictated by state, what is dictated by our own ordinances, CUPs. So, are there specifics that you would like us to identify, or is this just a general land use streamlining?
Thank you, Monica Renn, Economic Vitality Manager. It's a little bit of both. I think that a couple of years ago, we did identify some policies and some ordinances that staff felt could be streamlined. And then I think just what we've heard from the community and from recent conversations, that there's a desire to see a quote-unquote "more business-friendly" process. So, that's on there for either going back to those ordinances that were already identified, or if the council has others that they have heard or that they feel should be looked at, that staff's definitely open to that as well.
Any follow-up? Go ahead.
Oh, actually, it's you.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, this is for transportation under the, I think I'm in the third attachment, additional transportation items, TDM as well as Community Shuttle. Now, in the staff report, there was a discussion on just identifying transportation strategic priority as an overall umbrella. Would that still be the recommendation, and with identification of these as important? Or are you looking at a specific vote towards these specific policies?
So, these fell out as, I think, suggestions from mayor and council, so we wanted to capture them in that category. But yes, the reason for identifying transportation as a broad category is because it plays such a major strategic role for the town, but also because of the significant number of potential priorities in that category. So, we start to concentrate the efforts in one area with a finite number of staff that are able to address it. So, as we start to pile into that category, there will be some limitations on what we can move through and what we can address. So, we can work with the council to help prioritize those, or the council can give us a priority in terms of transportation items on what sort of floats to the top for you and what becomes less of a priority for you, and that will drive our work over the next couple of years.
Please, go ahead.
So, just as an example, if I, the congestion relief shuttles for schoolchildren, if I said that was my top priority, would identifying an overall community shuttle take away from that effort, or would that be helpful to still identify that it's important to have an alternative shuttle for non-students?
So, we're hoping that that plays out in your selection processes, you identify your priorities. So, we would get a combination of your priorities and other council member priorities that would provide us that direction. So, if you choose to select for your priorities, the Community Shuttle, as well as the school busing element that you gave us, I think, last year as a priority, then those would, depending on how many other council members identified those as well, those would start to float, start to identify for us in priorities based on the number of, the level of interest across the council.
Okay. Thank you.
So, maybe I have a follow-up question. It's not completely clear. So, we have a list of what you're calling new ideas, and you're really asking us to identify the new ideas. You've also asked us to look at sort of what's in progress. Maybe first, we look at what's in progress and say, should we take some off that, so we have room for more? But, you know, something such as the shuttle, you're kind of already working on it. So, unless we take it off, aren't you going to keep doing the shuttle? Because it's not even listed on the new ideas list.
Yeah. So, the school busing is in process as a form of priority, so we'll continue to work on that, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. I think that my question's been answered in the discussion, but I just wanted to see, does the staff want us to combine things or not? So, for example, complete streets policy, Winchester, infrastructure, summer cut-through traffic, transportation, TDM, et cetera, et cetera. Those could be lumped into one thing. Or, streamlining land use, streamlining business, all could be lumped into one thing called streamlining. So, does the staff want combined, you know, baskets of things, or do you want me to say, I really want a parklet? Which one is it?
Yeah, it's easier if we have individual ideas, so that way, we know what your real priorities are. Our experience from the past has been that if things get all put into the basket, then, you know, we'll be back, and we could come back and say, okay, now everything, we've got now ten things in a single basket. We're still going to, at some point, need you to prioritize the basket. And I think what we would like to know is, we know that school busing, that's already, that work is already happening. So, now the question is, is the council also interested in pursuing a community shuttle for non-students? So, it would be essentially a new project, a new concept that we would need to work through. It would still be the same staff, the same, you know, work effort, but we would need to know whether or not you'd like to expand the scope of that.
Okay. Any more, any more questions? I see no more questions. So, at this point, let's get input from the public, and I don't have any cards over here yet. All right, thank you. So, let's start with Angelia Dornar.
If I have, oh, Angelia Dornar, proud resident of the Almond Grove. If I have time at the end, I'll give you some specific items. However, I wanted to focus on some ideas or suggestions for the process, the prioritization process, and how we might be able to monitor that best throughout the year. Focusing primarily on consent items, expected grant funds, and the linking of individual projects during the year as to what priority categories they belong to, and sort of a running balance on how much have we spent towards those initiatives before we keep doing more. I have an example that I'd like to walk through with you, so that it's something that you will be familiar with, and I just wanted to point it out in this context. In June of seventeen, there was a consent item for $343,000 of non-competitive funding through OBAG. This was money that we get provided directly to us based on population. And so, it's a fixed amount of money that we get every single year, I believe, or maybe it's a two-year cycle. However, that 343 was not considered. We looked at all the funding or the money that might be available for the coming year. We did prioritization. It popped up in June, and what it got used for was a corridor study, and don't get upset with me, bicycle guys. Okay, it was, it used for a connection between Highway Nine and the Los Gatos Creek Trail, $340,000. Now, that was not on the Safe Routes to School Master Plan for bicycle and pedestrian. It was not on the Measure B priorities. In fact, not a single one of you said that that was going to be a priority. Mr. Rennie actually said he thought it might work, however, he didn't think it should even be number four. So, how that ended up getting the $343,000 funded towards it, I thought I never quite fully understood. And I had hoped that we would look at, go back and look at our priorities for real, and say that really, the transportation planning, like the bus and the Safe Routes to School projects, could have been accomplished with that money. What I, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, what I'm concerned about is that we're really not keeping track of these kinds of initiatives throughout the year. And so, if you just look at the things that came through this year since last prioritization on BPAC and Measure B, we have the $383,000 for this Highway Nine connection. That's just to develop the plan, the plan. Measure B support, we now have someone. We thought it was going to be a senior civil engineer. It's actually just a project manager. That's $275,000. Forget our annual street repair. That's all done separately. However, you look at all of these things, and it's a lot of money that's all going towards infrastructure.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Dornar? Seeing none. Thank you. So, next up, I have Jennifer Leibthal.
Hi. My name's Jennifer Leibthal. I'm a resident of Loma Alta Avenue. I'm here to discuss the permit parking comprehensive plan. I've been here a few other times, a few of us have. And I just want to kind of get it in front of your minds again, the impact to Loma Alta, given that, you know, six to eight other streets got permitted and Loma Alta did not. We're getting just all of the school, high school parking happening on our street. I now have to park twenty houses away from my house. It's worse than living in the city during school hours because there is no parking. There's a ninety-minute permit parking, but that's only ninety minutes. So, if I park there, I have to go back outside and move my car every ninety minutes, as well as my friends and family that come and visit. I had somebody come pick up furniture the other day, and they had nowhere to park. They left. I've had other people leave as well because there's no parking for them. And so, I just ask that you consider that plan again, either adding Loma Alta to the permits, taking away the permits from the other street, finding some other solution. I talked to a couple of people on the staff, and one suggestion that came up through those communications was maybe permitting Loma Alta, but then also allowing a certain percentage of permits on all the streets to go to students, so that the residents have parking in front of their houses, and then you can also make money off student parking. So, maybe, you know, on Loma Alta, and by the way, Loma Alta would be lower and upper Loma Alta. I live on Loma Alta, lower, but upper Loma Alta is affected as well now. It's gotten that bad. It goes all the way up the street. But, you know, allowing thirty students to park on the street, or whatever it is, right, give out thirty permits for students to try to kind of balance what's happening. I know, I listened to all the other priorities, and I know how important all of them are, and I feel really bad for you guys to have to make this kind of decision. But I can only say that it may, I've lived on that street for twenty years. It makes me not want to live there anymore. It's that bad. It's really miserable. It's also a safety issue. I haven't mentioned it. I mean, others will, but huge, there's so much speeding on the street now, and our property values are going down. If somebody wants to sell their, one of my neighbors was talking about selling their house. I need to sell my house eventually, and people can't even come park to look at the house. Who wants to live there? Right? Anyways, so I just ask you to possibly add this again to the priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Seeing none. Thank you. Okay, so next up, David Weissman.
I ask for your vote tonight for finishing up the fence ordinance revision. After two planning commission and one town council meeting, we are too close not to complete this important document. Speaking as a trained ecologist, I agree with former Planning Commissioner John Bourgeois, who sent you a letter yesterday that an expensive, time-consuming wildlife corridor study is not necessary because it won't tell us anything that we don't already know. This fence ordinance draft is aimed at localized animal movements pathways and not large-scale migration corridors, such as those being discussed across Coyote Valley by various wildlife agencies. The last town council meeting was a good example of democracy in action, with people on both sides persuasively arguing for their positions. That's where compromise comes from, and we have already put forward compromise language in a letter to council that has been endorsed by the environmental community. I believe that with one more go-around with staff, starting with our compromise draft, is all that will be required before being ready to bring a draft back before either the planning commission or the town council. Nothing in our proposed draft compromise is new to the Bay Area. Our compromise, while not as comprehensive as Portola's valleys, will still benefit wildlife and will stop current town discrimination based, town discrimination between new fences proposed on hillside lots with houses and those without houses. The wildlife-friendly goals discussed in both the general plan and the hillside guidelines can be realized. And on an historic note, in 2004, this town authorized the Shannon Valley Ranch PD for some thirteen houses on eighty acres. The conditions of approval for that subdivision required fences to be set back from property lines and to be of an open rail design. These provisions are both already included in the current compromise. Now is the time to incorporate them into town-wide standards.
Any questions for Dr. Weissman? Seeing none. Thank you. Okay, so next up, I have Laura Knoll, I think, K-N-O-L-L.
Hi. My name's Laura Knoll. I'm also a resident on Loma Alta, more towards the middle of the street. I just wanted to reiterate what Jennifer has already mentioned about the congestion on the street, especially during school hours in the school season. We moved to Loma Alta about two and a half years ago, and we moved in August, and little did we know that during the school year, the parking situation and the safety would become such a concern. I have a seventh grader, and she walks to school. She walks to Fisher, and she has to cross the street at Loma Alta, because we live on the opposite side. So, and she has to maneuver between inexperienced teenage drivers. So, it's really a safety issue. You know, high schoolers speeding up and down the street, doing illegal U-turns to try to find the appropriate spot. We are a five-person house, and we are a household, and we do have a garage, but we have three cars, since we do have teenage drivers ourselves. So, we need that extra space on the, on the street for parking, and oftentimes, during the school year, there is no parking. Again, like Jennifer said, we have to park a block or two up, just to, just to park on our own street. And when people come to visit, especially during, like I said, school hours, it's very difficult for them to find parking as well. So, just wanted to, hopefully, you guys can consider the possibility of permitting our street as well. As Jennifer said, most of the streets around us are permitted, so all the parking ends up on our street. Thank you.
Any questions? Councilmember Jensen.
Thank you. I was going to ask the last speaker, but I'll ask you. You have ninety-minute parking already on Loma Alta, correct?
No.
You do not? Okay. Were you aware of, back in March, when the council was considering a comprehensive parking plan for those areas within a half-mile of the high school that included ninety-minute parking within that area?
No, I think.
I was. I got a letter.
Okay. Because the council actually passed it, and then there was loud objection from a particular street, and then the council unpassed it? So, I just wanted to see if you were asking for a sticker that said residents only, or you were asking for time limitations?
I guess I would be open to either.
I guess I would be open to either, you know.
Just so we can park on our street.
Exactly.
Okay, I'd, no, I just, I have to ask this person, and this person has to answer me. Okay, so you answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, Jeff Lockridge.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Jeff Lockridge, 109 Paseo Laura. I am current, the current chair of the BPAC. Thank you for your support of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission. I was selected at the December BPAC meeting to provide the council with an update of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission's accomplishments during the past year. Most notably, the town council approved the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan in March of this year. Completion of this plan required numerous BPAC-coordinated special meetings, public meetings, and work with the master plan consultant for over a year. Development and approval of this plan allows the council and the community to develop safer paths of travel for pedestrians and bicyclists throughout the town while allowing Los Gatos to apply for various grants and matching funds. The BPAC has been making a presence at town events. At the Spring Into Green event, the BPAC provided a booth with a town map where residents identified bicycle and pedestrian areas of concern around town. The BPAC has also been involved with providing several successful bike valet services for town events, including the Red, White, and Blue Block Party and the Town Holiday Parade. The BPAC helped to coordinate a bike valet for the private Eat, Drink, and Los Gatos, Eat, Drink, Los Gatos event, which was also very successful. These efforts help keep the BPAC members informed of community priorities so that they can more effectively fulfill their advisory capacity to council. They also raise awareness among residents of the ease of riding their bikes to town events versus fighting traffic and trying to find parking spaces. Additionally, the BPAC worked to develop a prioritization list for capital projects from the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan for council approval. This led to the development of a recommendation for council to use the town non-competitive O-BAG grant funding to fund the design of the Measure B identified Highway Nine Bicycle and Pedestrian Connector Project. The BPAC also worked with PPW on incorporating bicycle and pedestrian striping enhancements in the town's maintenance projects. This is a simple and very inexpensive way to increase bicycle and pedestrian improvements on our town roadways. The council was supportive of the commission in each of these endeavors. The BPAC appreciates the council's continued support of both the commission, the bicycle and pedestrian projects in the town, and is looking forward to another successful year in 2018. We welcome council feedback on priorities for 2018. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see if you have any questions. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Lockridge. Next up, Peter Hurtan.
Thank you, council members and staff. Regarding Attachment One, the strategic priorities in progress section, I've been newly interested in the affordable housing issue as well as continued interest in the parking issue. So, I'd like to comment upon the work item with, about selling and leasing the town's surplus properties. So, I'd like to suggest that it's premature to consider selling or leasing those properties until there's further discussion about its potential, those particular properties' potential use as affordable housing land or parking structures. That's that item. With regard to Attachment Four, on new ideas, I have two, one of which I will recommend as a referral to the Finance Committee, and that is as a result of discussions with town manager Pravetti over the past year, your letter of transmittal of either the CAFRA or the budget, I don't remember, which pointed out that the town residents spend $14 million with the county central fire district for our fire protective services. And as you may know, that's billed to us without visibility, without transparency on our property tax bills as one of the uses of our 1% to the county. It's not separated out as a particular line item, so none of us knows the percentage of our property taxes that goes toward our fire district. I'm not suggesting $14 million is inappropriate. We're paying somewhere between $10 and $13 million for our fire, for our police services. I think it's in the Finance Committee meeting, it was pointed out, it's 13 when you include the pass-through of $3 million. My reason for wanting to refer to the Finance Committee, I think it's time to relook at the formula for how the residents are paying for fire services. That formula, I believe, was set at the time of Proposition 13 as a fixed percentage. So, with the change of property values, how much we're paying towards central fire may have shifted compared to other municipalities. So, that's why I'm recommending that's one of the priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hurtan? Seeing none, thank you. Next up, I have Ryan Finchell.
Staff and town council and Mayor Rennie, thank you for having me. I'm a resident of Loma Alta Avenue. I'm here with my friends and neighbors, Laura and Jennifer, and I will keep it very short and sweet. I was here six months ago in support of this issue. I really appreciate you guys looking into permit parking on Loma Alta. I'm not going to go over everything that Jennifer said. I thought she was, laid it out perfectly. And Councilmember Jensen, you mentioned, you had a question about time permit versus a resident permit. We would be thrilled if we had a time permit that was from 7:00 AM to 4:00 PM, which is similar to what is going on on Johnson Avenue, and that parallels Loma Alta. So, thank you very much for bringing this back into all the great things that you do. Thanks.
Okay, any questions for the speakers? Seeing none, thank you. Next up, Mary Gulart.
Good evening, council members and staff. My item is on, it's Agenda Item Four, the Senior Coordinating Position. Again, my name's Mary Gulart. I'm the director of the Live Oak Senior Nutrition and Service Center here in town. I am very encouraged by the momentum I see building related to our age-friendly community. I greatly appreciate the work that the town council and Mayor Rennie have put into exploring the new senior coordinating position here in town and what the responsibilities might be. As part of the Age Friendly Task Force, I have researched age-friendly communities quite a bit. I've learned a lot about what makes them successful, and I would like to share some of my ideas regarding the senior coordinating position with you. I see a senior coordinator as one who knows the key stakeholders very well and works hard to promote all local senior programs and services. They partner with other community members who advocate for seniors and create new programs to meet the unmet needs. They are dedicated to improving the overall well-being of older adults at all ages and stages in their senior years. A senior coordinator educates the entire community about the needs for services for older adults, and they inspire partnership between community members, town government, business, service organizations, schools, and spiritual communities. They utilize volunteers to expand emergency preparedness, intergenerational programs, and to promote new learning and options for healthier, happier living. A senior coordinator takes advantage of every chance to improve the quality of life for all seniors. They offer older adults opportunities to give back, to experience a sense of purpose and fulfillment once again, and they help weave them back into the fabric of our communities. I am grateful to all of you who recognize the importance of honoring our elders, of including them in the life of our Los Gatos community. Remember, many of us qualify as seniors, or we are not far from being labeled as such. Let us create the most vibrant, age-friendly community we can and embrace the wonderful possibilities of an active and engaged future. Thank you.
Okay, any questions for the speaker? I do, I do have one. You may not have had a chance to read the staff report, but they are suggesting, rather than having a community coordinator, that we kind of either add more dollars to some of the existing resources, I guess, such as the rec center, let them put on more programs or give the county some more dollars to do more caseload for us, or maybe add a library staff person to do more programming through the library, or kind of the ways they suggested we do it. And they are asking us also, do we want, if we're interested in this, do we want more caseload kinds of things or more programming kinds of things? Can you comment on that a little bit?
Yeah, case management is very important.
But, but we have a lot already from West Valley Community Services and some of the other organizations. So, do we need more?
And, and I don't think so. I think case management is a one-on-one thing, and it is very important, but I think, and adding more programs is also good. What I see would be the biggest bang for the buck, so to speak, is to have somebody who is promoting all the existing programs, who are building new programs in partnership with the people in the town, whether it's the business, town government, the different agencies and service organizations, because then you get the whole community involved. And it's different than just adding a program or a case manager. It's a much broader approach. And if anybody's interested, you can go and look online about what the different age-friendly communities are doing. And a lot of it is using volunteers and using the whole town to build services and programs, and you can get a lot more involvement and a lot more going than if you're just adding a program or a case manager. And I think they're all important, but that's my particular perspective.
All right.
Is building the whole community behind it, and then it changes the whole impact.
Thank you. Any further questions for Ms. Gulart? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
So, next up is David Klinger.
Hello, I'm here to request a rehearing of the non-hillside fence height ordinance. It was on the agenda last council meeting, but in the press of the hillside ordinance with the fences there and quite a number of speakers and also the Veterans Memorial, that I don't think that the fence height issue was adequately addressed at that time. And so, I'm here to try to make that a priority so we get a decent hearing for that.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, thank you. Okay, so next up, I have Brayton Gosling.
Hello, I'm the general manager over at Hotel Los Gatos. I've been here working in town for about eight years now, and one of the things that I would like to potentially address for next year or in the coming future is to talk about how the town is currently using the TOT, as well as the most recent increase to the TOT. And it's kind of as of right now, just going into the general fund in a nebulous way, which is not how most cities or towns use their TOT. And some aspect of it, some portion of it, goes back into talking about tourism in the town, talking about, you know, it goes hand-in-hand with economic vitality. You know, I think that the hotels do a really good job here, bringing people into town, keeping them busy in our restaurants and things like that. So, you know, as we look next year with increases in wages going up, it's going to be harder and harder for restaurants and other businesses to continue to stay in business. And so, support from those funds would be great to kind of help promote the town and talk about why people should come to Los Gatos and why is it such a great town to be visiting. And, you know, some of the restaurants with a smaller budget may not be able to advertise themselves as much, but they shouldn't be forgotten. And, you know, I think that looking at TOT could be a great way to kind of give some extra money, perhaps even to the chamber, to allow a little more outreach as the town's visitor center that it is.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Jensen?
Thank you for that. I know that you're involved with the chamber. Well, throughout the last couple of years, there's been at least some suggestion or discussion that perhaps the businesses should form a business association, downtown business association, and essentially tax themselves to do that kind of thing in conjunction with the chamber or perhaps the town. What's your opinion about doing that, or have you worked toward that at all with the chamber? And if not, why not?
Sure. So, the chamber has got together and talked about that, and we are worried with, by doing that, we will potentially be creating another layer and overburdening ourselves. A lot of the restaurants and other businesses in town don't really feel that they have the additional funds to put into an additional program like that. So, it is something we've discussed, but we've kind of decided as of right now to shy away from it.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, thank you. Okay, next up, Jack Vanneta.
Good evening again. It occurred to me that some of these priorities will cost money, and one of the things I wanted to bring to your attention that I didn't have time to before is that we only contribute 33% to our miscellaneous pensions right now. Our net position from 2014 to 2017 dropped from 142 million to 117 million, which is a drop of 18%. In the meeting, in the next meeting, you're going to see that it's much worse than that. Net assets dropped in 2011 from 29 million to 6,800,000 in 2017, a 76% drop. If we figure on the six-and-a-half percent rate, discount rate, which we need to do, the drop in our net position is going to absolutely startle you. There'll be more on that in the next meeting. But again, I'm saying this because I think we have to be very cautious about the money that we are spending in the next probably 10 years. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Vanneta? Seeing none, thank you. Next up, Catherine Summers.
Good evening, council. Too much to say and too little time, but I'll try. First of all, thank you to all the merchants and business owners and everybody who got together and helped me with what I wanted to say tonight. Thanks for Brayton for coming. As you know, it's a really busy time of year to get any of the merchants here. They're all down at their shops right now, trying to make up for a little of that lost revenue from the summer. I did want to request that the council consider economic vitality as one of your priorities for 2018. Let's take a minute and imagine Los Gatos in 2027. That's 10 short years from now, and it will go by like that. What will this town look like? What businesses will be here? What restaurants will have survived? We can help shape that. We live in such a world right now where everything's such instant gratification and everything happens so fast that I think we forget to look ahead and look at the future. But it really is our responsibility, all of us here in this room, to look ahead and to plan and to imagine. I believe that we are getting desperate and panicked with these looming expenses of unfunded liability pensions, and I know they're important, and we're all protecting our community, but to a real degree of being defensive. I think by scrimping and saving and this idea of cost recovery is just hurting our neighborhoods. It's hurting the goodwill in the community, the friendly neighborhoods and the spirit. What if we took a different tactic? And what if we partnered and cooperated with each other and shared our resources a little more? You hear the chatter about Willow Glen, Santana Row, and Campbell, and yeah, those places are really bright and shiny, and we just have to sparkle a little bit more, excuse the pun for the holidays. We can make that happen. It's a leap of faith, I know, but there is the money there. And I've experienced some of this because, as you know, I have a pretty conservative board, and they gave me a few chances this year with some things. The Eat, Drink, Los Gatos, none of them believed that we could do it. We wanted 2,500 people. We ended up with about 6,000 to 7,000 people. The holiday stroll, the girls' night out, the wreaths that we've heard so much about, which cost the chamber a lot of money but really had a big impact. In the last month alone, the chamber has 31 new members. That is remarkable, and I think that is truly because they see that we're doing something. With your help and with your funding, possibly from the TOT, we can really make a difference. And I think if we can imagine that, perhaps our sales tax revenues would go up, perhaps by so much that we could actually look at those unfunded pension liabilities in a different way and be able to pay them down. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I made it.
Any questions? Councilmember Spector has a question for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, maybe this will get you an opportunity to talk more. So first of all, thank you. One of the things that we're doing tonight on all items is trying to be as specific as possible. And so, you know, you're talking about economic vitality. We've had people who have asked for a portion of the TOT, that's specific. We've had people who have suggested the bicycle taxis, whatever it was called, the parking. So those are specific. Do you have anything specific that you are requesting as part of the downtown, or I shouldn't say downtown, the Los Gatos economic vitality?
You saved me, because yes, as a matter of fact, I do. So I love the idea of a community trolley, or something that brings people to town. We talked a little bit about even maybe like petty taxi cabs, that, you know, that take people from one end of the town to another, from restaurant to restaurant, so that it would be kind of a destination that people would talk about and say, I want to go down and try these things. We've talked about parklets, which I think is a really good idea, and we've looked into the expenses of those, and I think we could actually afford that. Music in that park. When that music reverberates through the trees, people come out. I've seen it happen. I saw it happen at the Holiday Stroll. And it really, it just brings life and vibrancy. And people are out shopping, and they're talking, and they're smiling, and they're... I think for the age-friendly initiative, I think if we had picnic benches, or places to play chess, or checkers, I think we'd get people out there, the young and the old, and the middle-aged together. You know, having lunch at picnic tables. I think there's just some really easy things. For starters, street banners. So easy to just put something up that's bright and colorful. And as you come down Main Street, as you come down North Santa Cruz and the Boulevard we already have been talking about, I think it just makes you feel good about where you live. And I really believe that community spirit is what's going to put us in a position where we, as somebody said earlier, you know, we're at that end of Silicon Valley, the gateway to Santa Cruz. I mean, people know we're here. We just have to shout it and say, come and visit. Love where you live.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, may I, a couple more things?
Please, go ahead.
Following up, I want to make sure we're all on the same page. When you say park lots, what are you talking about?
So parklets, I think they have them in, correct me if I'm wrong, I think some of the staff knows more about this than I do, but in Mountain View, and they have, I think San Luis Obispo has done it. And so it's, it would be along North Santa Cruz, and you kind of build out where there's a few parking spaces, and you'd build out, and you'd have some outdoor seating, so that as you're walking down, it would be more like an outdoor, you know, open mall. And just give the feeling of stopping and hanging out.
Got it. And when you say music in the park, what park are you talking about?
Town Plaza Park.
And picnic tables, where?
I think Civic Center. We could use a few really nice picnic tables, and then also in Plaza.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions for Ms. Summers? Go ahead, Councilmember Sack.
Okay, so a couple of things. Want to follow up on the parklets. I hear mixed things from merchants. Some don't want to take away parking. Is this something that, as a board, there's been a decision behind? The idea of parklets on North Santa Cruz?
The Chamber Board?
The Chamber Board?
No, not necessarily. It's just one of the ideas that has, you know, kind of floated around a little bit. And there's a few restaurant owners who've, you know, kind of pushed that idea. I do think it would hurt with the parking, which is another whole issue in and of itself. But I'm confident that the Parking and Transportation Committee is working on some new ideas, as is, I think Jackie Rose has some new parking, you know, and the parking garage, definitely pushing for that. So I think, you know, parklets might not be able to happen right away, but something that we could look at.
Okay, and then the other thing I wanted to ask you was about streamlining. So you mentioned banners, which is on my list. There are a couple of other things that we can streamline. But is, what comes top of mind for you? I know I've heard in the past CUP requirements, just banners, signage. Is there anything that comes often when the chamber is discussing streamlining?
I think, again, it just really goes back to the cooperation, collaboration, you know, just of... And again, the whole notion of cost recovery does scare me, because I think that we have so many service organizations, and as many of you know, you know, a group of them have been meeting and talking about it. And I think they're so discouraged about putting on these events that are actually making for a more vibrant community. And I think as a council, you have to decide, and it's a hard decision, maybe some of those events aren't actually making the town more vibrant. And that's something, you know, that's where you have to figure out which ones are and which ones aren't, make that hard decision, and then invest into the ones that you believe that are. And we've talked about that as a staff and as a board, and that's a hard position to be in. But I think you're going to lose a lot of the enthusiasm and excitement from all the service organizations if you don't support them a little bit more. I don't know if that answered your question.
Okay, and one last question, actually two. So on that note, so just wanted to make sure you're aware of when we do talk about community events for that discussion to take place. And then the alcohol policy, is you can see that has never been touched for a variety of reasons. Do you have any opinions on whether that's just removed because of the fact we're at 0%? Is that something that is a priority?
So, excuse my ignorance, I didn't even know that that was on, like, as a priority. So I don't even know exactly what it entails.
Okay.
Sorry.
I think that answers the question, then. Thank you.
I haven't, nobody's complained to me about it yet, so I guess...
Councilmember Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Circling back to you, of the items that you gave us, and there's about, I have about six or seven, how many of those have been vetted by your board? Or are these just things you've heard around?
Well, I could turn to one of my board members here. I think we've vetted most of them. We have pretty open discussions. And, you know, we really have a very, while they're a conservative board, you know, they know how important economic vitality is. And so we've kind of hashed out a lot of these ideas. Have they actually set them in a list of priorities for ourselves? I mean, it may sound silly, but I mean, getting the fountain turned on was one of them a while ago, which happened. And I think that did make a difference, getting, being able to do that Eat Drink Los Gatos and actually get, you know, start to, you know, make it happen was huge and a good collaboration with the town. I think the banners, I think if we did get the banners hung, or some sort of banner hung, I think the board would be really happy. So I mean, they're really simple, simple steps at just making the town shine.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Ms. Summers. I have another card. Tony Alarcon.
Counsel, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I wasn't going to, but when we started talking about parking, it reminded me of an idea that I've had for many years. And I think we have a great solution. When you come up Highway 9 behind Chase, there's the three-hour parking lot. And that's a single story. I've always envisioned, one of the difficulties when you come into town as an outsider, or even as a town resident and driving, is finding a spot to park. And that particular location is ideal for a multi-level parking structure. If I were on council, or if I had my vote, I would designate that parking lot as an employee parking structure. So we can easily take a headcount on the number of employees that work in town and drive in town. And that would get the employee cars off the streets downtown and make it easier for people to park in town. And depending upon the cost, of course, it's about $100,000 a stall for a subterranean. We might be able to have a look-through where they have a badge for an employee. And that could be covered through an increased sales tax to cover the cost of doing so. So that's a solution that I've always thought was pretty apparent to increase parking downtown. And so that's something that I'd like the council to look at as a potential solution, because we already own that land. And I do not believe that we're maximizing the parking on that space. So given where it's at, and the matured trees, the neighbors that border university on the backside of their lots, I don't know that they would have a big issue with that. An idea for town economic viability, something I've always wanted to do and never have, because I've been worried about regulations and cost. But getting older in my years, I might take it on now. I would like to have a soapbox derby in town. That would be focused on science and technology. I've talked with someone that is related to Garmin, and we could have that as a high school event. And that would be a big draw into town from outsiders, corporate sponsorship for the event. And the proceeds could even go back into some of the local school foundations. And when you look at town, we have adults, we have events for adults. We do not really have any events, major events, for teenagers. And I think that's something that we should also consider in the coming year, in the future years, to get whole-town involvement. And that's just my thoughts and recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Following up on your parking suggestion on the north lot, I don't know if you've had this experience or not, so I'll just ask the question. I talked to employees all over town about using that north lot. I talked to them about using Miles. And their reaction is terrible. They think it is a terrible idea, and they don't want to go out there, and they don't want to walk that far. So that's the reaction I get. And Miles is closer than the north lot, and the north lot is a little bit further. So do you think it's realistic, and what has your experience been?
I think maybe, I think there could be some resistance with employees running late for work and wanting to park closer. Perhaps with now a new fitness trend, people might be okay with walking. And maybe what we do is we have a Miles lot allocated to the businesses that are closer to that proximity, and a parking lot for the businesses that are closer to that proximity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Alarcon. Okay, I have no more cards. Is anybody else dying to speak to us? Seeing nobody coming forward, I will close the public testimony. And so my vision of this is that we would break it in three chunks, if that's what the town manager's thinking also. The first chunk would be to look at what's in progress for our current strategic priorities, and see if we want to take some things off of that to make room for more. The second chunk would then be, has been asked for us each to give kind of our top three priorities. That may be a little difficult to just do top three. Maybe it's top three big ones, and maybe we can mention some smaller ones. And then the last piece, it's probably pretty short, is to look at the town attorney's list of priority list of ordinances, and whether we think that's the right order for that. So town manager, did you want to take over again, or?
I think you've laid out a great process. And Mayor, I think with that outline, again, if there's any additional clarifications that any council member needs, the team is here for you. But you're doing a great job facilitating our meeting, so I...
All right, so let's start. Questions? Councilmember Sack?
Okay, I actually have a couple before we get into prioritizing. The first is for the town attorney, for your list, wireless facilities. I just want to make sure I understand the, I think it was AB 649 that was defeated. Would this proposed ordinance help us in case another ordinance, such as that, were to come forward? And basically, it describes, I think what we're afraid of is just the ability for telecommunications to just put up their equipment anywhere without any discretionary review on our part. Would the ordinance that you have here help us in that regard?
Yes, our ordinance actually for wireless is way behind. This would actually catch up to where the laws were enacted in 2014 and 2015 that were enacted and weren't unsuccessful. And a lot has to do with that, is there's what's called a shot clock. When an application comes in for that, we only have a certain amount of time. So we've been defaulting to the state law instead of having our own ordinance as to what we can actually even charge for an encroachment permit. And we're currently able to regulate some of the aesthetics involved in some of the wireless towers. But we need to have those in objective standards, if you want to go back to that type of language that shows exactly where they can go, what has to be done. For example, Santa Cruz requires the vault to be undergrounded. So there's some issues that we need to look at and make that ordinance go through. We've been working on it. Right now, it's already underway, because it was on last year's list. We've developed an agreement that's like a facilities agreement, encroachment permit, but we still need the language in our ordinance, even if there's no new laws that come forward. But you're right, it is possible that we could be in this process and get more of our discretion taken away even further by federal law.
May I keep going?
Please, go ahead.
So just to follow up to that, then, my understanding is the federal, there is going to be proposed federal regulation. So does it make sense to begin it if there is this chance?
We're already beginning it, so we already have to even come in compliance with state law. So it could certainly drop down a little bit, depending on where the federal law goes, and that would be fine. And then if, in fact, it doesn't come forward, we could reprioritize it. So if you felt there was one of the other ones that were more important, or another one, we could certainly lower it to a lower number than number one.
Okay.
If I could chime in just for, sorry, for a second on that one. There are a couple considerations. If we're able to put a use agreement in place with the telecommunications company, there could be a revenue stream behind it that would be general fund revenue. So the idea would be to make something that's palatable to the town and step in front of any law that might be coming along and lock them in ahead of time with ongoing payments.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, another question I have, it was mentioned from a speaker about the process. Now, I know one of our values is good governance. And so I'm wondering, instead of identifying as a specific priority, does it make sense to talk about the process so that there's a clear understanding, whatever the priorities we identify, it still has to come back and incorporate it in the work plan, and then in the budgets? Is that a correct process assumption from here?
Absolutely. So the budget document, and you setting the whole council giving us budget direction on February 20th is really a key milestone. And then in May is when the council opens a public hearing and hears from the community about the actual proposed budget. But we have so much work to do in the town that it really would be helpful if we can align the proposed budget with the new strategic priorities, as well as any additional budget direction you'd like to give us on the 20th.
Okay.
And then let me just add that I think what we'd like to do as well is think of a mechanism to make sure that the council and the public know what is the progress, and how can we better utilize information out to the public? So if, maybe they're not interested in all of them, but if there's one or two that a public community member wants to track, how do they access that information? How do they find out where we are? So we're looking at how we can improve our own communications back, not only to the council, but the community as well.
Okay, and then somewhat related to process, there were some ideas that, for our committees, one, including our finance committee, such as looking at TOT and fire. During our strategic priorities, do we also identify priorities that we would ask our commissions to be doing? Or we identify what the town's priorities are, and then each commission will then fold theirs into ours?
So I would suggest that tonight we really talk about what are the town priorities, so that way we can go back and do some additional scoping of the specific items. So for example, if it's the TOT issue, there would be some staff work behind it. And, you know, the finance committee has a very specific charge given to it by the council by resolution. And really, it would probably be more appropriate for the full council to determine whether or not you would want your staff to pursue either TOT or the fire department question, as was raised. as was raised. But both of those would be up for prioritization tonight.
And then my last question. I just need a sense of how much work, two items were that I heard tonight. Non-hillside fences, which is just, I think, a simple sentence. Is that, could that be broken out so that it's not contingent?
Absolutely.
Okay. And then if I could just get clarification on Loma Alta, is it limited parking on the entire lower and upper Loma Alta?
JR Langer, Support Services Lieutenant for the Police Department. There is no parking on Loma Alta at this time. There's no limited or no parking. It's free public parking.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is sort of a statement and sort of a question of staff. In preparing for tonight's meeting, what I did for myself is listed priorities, some which I think are on these lists and some which may not be. But I was, my objective was to limit the number of priorities that I was focusing on so that hopefully we would be more successful in the year to come of getting more things done. So there may be really wonderful worthwhile things that are brought forward, and they may not be something that I will be supporting, not because they're not good ideas, but because I think we need to limit our objectives.
Okay. Councilmember Jensen?
Two questions. One maybe is to Ms. Pravetti. We are, Ms. Spector just talked about getting things done. Ms. Pravetti was talking about reporting to the public on the progress. I just want to understand, in looking at the chart behind you that assigns percentages to various things, where, how did the staff arrive at those percentages? So if I take, for example, reduce summer cut through traffic, it says 30%. So to me, you're never going to get to 100%. So, and it's a continuing thing that we address every once in a while, or a lot. So where does that 30% come from? And given that one example, how does it make a difference to staff if council were to say, "Take that off the list because it's addressed through various other things"?
I'm going to ask Director Morley to start, and then I'll supplement as needed.
Thank you. So the percentages, I think, are estimates by staff in terms of the amount of time we've spent. The cut-through traffic is definitely a very difficult one because, as you noted, we'll likely never get to 100%. The 30% is really targeted towards the implementation of a roundabout at Wood Road. So that's sort of a key mark in that project that we're targeting as a measure that gives us something to shoot for.
That answers the question. So, reduce cut-through traffic is big, but roundabout is small, so we are going for specifics. So, okay, I get that. My second question is maybe to Lieutenant Langer or the chief. With respect to parking, as I said to one of the speakers, the council considered a park, comprehensive parking plan back in March, actually passed four to one, and it created a high school district. And I'm just wondering, if I'm thinking about things that are easy to check off, does, has anything changed from March for the plan that was proposed, or the streets involved, or anything else, such that if the council wanted to take it up, it could just take up what was already done and reconsider it?
Yeah. With appropriate council direction regarding that project, the project's recommendations basically have not changed, and we could begin conducting our outreach to begin that project.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Okay, so seeing no pressing questions at the moment. So the first thing I wanted to tackle was our current strategic priorities, and are we happy with what's there? Do we want to take anything off the list? And I would be happy to go ahead and go first. I know sometimes people hesitate to say, "Let's not do something." We like to say what we want to do and maybe not mention the things we don't want to do. I would look at the list and I say, "I really like the ongoing ones that are there. I wouldn't do anything to that." If somebody wants to add one, I will listen. I wouldn't take anything off. The general plan action items, I think, should be taken off. That was from our last general plan. That's probably eight years ago now, and we're going to be starting a new general plan. So I think we, it would be kind of silly because they may not even be what we want anymore, or may not be relevant. The alcohol policy I would take off. I think that really came from a time in the past when the planning commission struggled a lot of times with new applications on alcohol, and they weren't sure what our policy was and which way to go. And that has kind of solved itself. I'm not seeing that problem anymore. I haven't heard any more of it. So I don't think we, you know, we've got so many other things to do, I wouldn't work on that either. And I'm, you know, the idea of a complete streets policy sounds nice, but I think we've got many other things to work on. You know, we'd probably really cover it anyway without doing a policy, so I would probably take that off the list also to make room for other things. So that's my thoughts. Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your, what you just did helps me figure out what I'm going to do. With regard to the, I'm going to do maybe just the opposite, the ones with which I agree. On the ongoing, the pension and OPEB, absolutely. Measure B, absolutely. I didn't know what staff meant with install bicycle and pedestrian improvement, so I'm going to have a question on that. And the regional communications and interoperability, yes. So I will get back to staff on the bicycle and pedestrian because we had, on economic vitality, we had input received with regard to the parking valet, and I do like that. With regard to in-progress, Amangrove Streets, yes. North 40 specific plan, yes. Ordinances by the town attorney, yes. And I would focus on those that are mandated by the federal government or the state government. The sale or lease of certain town properties, yes. Reduced summer cut-through traffic, yes. The general plan, yes, in the sense of reviewing what we're going to do in the future, and I would specifically be looking at examining the housing part of the general plan in light of the objective and other standards mandated by the state. On the downtown parking, yes, in the sense of the parking garage process going forward. And with regard to that list, that's all, although at some point this evening, I do have items that I have that are independent of this list.
Go ahead, Ms. Pravetti.
May I just get a clarification? With the general plan update, we will be looking at, you know, our overall goals, the item that's currently on the list, or really looking at implementing the current general plan action items. So I wasn't sure if you were thinking forward to our new update.
I did understand that what you had here was the past general plan. I was looking at a personal priority of a new general plan, but limited to certain items. And for me, what's important is the housing element and looking at that in light of the new legislation.
Okay. Any other? Councilmember Jensen?
I didn't know if you wanted us to go in order or how you wanted to do it, but, okay.
The bravest first.
Strategic priorities, ongoing, I don't have any objection to any of those. Several of these, which is why I asked the question about combining, to me, they're the same, but they're called out differently. So if I look at cut-through traffic, that's related to downtown businesses. If I look at downtown parking, that's related to downtown business. Do I think there should be a vitality strategic plan, a document that's a plan? No. So, enhance the diversity of businesses. I don't even know why it's called that. Does that mean sticking with formula retail ordinances? I don't really understand what that is or what it means. If it means trying to make downtown more successful, then yes, I think that should be there. I agree with Ms. Spector with respect to the ordinances, state mandated, federal mandated. The plan development, I've been trying to get that done since I've been on council, and it's gone nowhere. So I would reluctantly take that off the list. Summer cut-through traffic, if I understand that to be only a roundabout, I would take it off. General plan items for the current specific plan, current general plan, I would take it off. A vitality strategic plan, I would not do that, but I would do things to make our economics work better. Address downtown parking, if I understand that to be a garage, yes. And I also understand that to be not only a garage, but the transportation and parking, and the policy committee has been working on employee parking policies. So to the extent that that includes that, I would want that to be still on. Complete streets, I don't think makes sense. The alcohol policy, speaking as a planning commissioner, yes, there was confusion from the planning commission, and we always wanted the alcohol policy, which is hopelessly out of date, I think it's from 1984, to be updated and specified. We finally divorced the entertainment policy. But I don't think updating the alcohol policy is wise at this point. I'd take it off. But I just note that I think it's part of an economic vitality or land use process streamlining type of thing because it creates a layer on top of a CUP that makes it much more difficult for businesses that want to have alcohol to get open and get underway in how they conduct their business.
Okay, so let me ask staff maybe some questions. You also, in your staff report, talked about reframing. You had an item talking about reframing, and I assume you meant these in progress. And you talked about calling one of them transportation. And I think you were maybe going to combine some of these. And you also were going to reframe one, suggesting reframing one called economic vitality. And you wanted to know whether we thought that was streamlining processes or physical improvements to downtown. Are you suggesting those items would replace certain things on here? Could you speak to that?
Certainly. So we are, so I think, you know, we've heard discussion that perhaps there's no real value to having a document called an economic vitality plan, but perhaps we can identify a suite of activities, such as streamlining our ordinances, continuing to work on parking garage, and other things that would help improve the downtown. So for that, we are looking, that is staff's proposal, is that we create that umbrella. However, if there are interest, interest on the part of the council with respect to physical improvements, you know, we would be interested to know what specifically you would want us to pursue in that area. And similarly, for transportation, as Director Morley said, we have a lot of things happening in our transportation world, and I think we've, that basket is almost all full. But I think it would help that as a strategy, this town is committed to transportation. And so we're thinking, if we could reframe it, then that allows for us to continue to work on those items. And then if you have a couple more that you'd like to add specifically, we can. And then, if I may, we are actually, now that we've made some significant progress on accessory dwelling units and fences and a few other things, we are actually gearing up to bring plan development and all those recommendations to Planning Commission in early 2018, with a target date for council consideration of March 20th of 2018, as noted in the staff report. So we're, I know it's taking a long time, and we appreciate the patience of the council, but I think we've, there was some really good thinking, and I don't, as your staff, we're not recommending that drop off.
Councilmember, well, let's go back to Councilmember Jensen. We'll let you respond.
I was just going to respond that if there's actually going to be something happening on plan development, then I rescind my remark about taking it off. Then I was going to comment on, Ms. Pravetti, you did encapsulate what I was talking about with, that I don't think an economic strategic plan makes sense, but developing a set of items that would enhance that, to me, makes sense. And I don't want to get ahead of my categories by saying which ones I want unless the mayor is going to let me do that, which would be one-way North Santa Cruz pilot project, because I also see that as a traffic reduction and good for downtown. And I don't know how many get to choose, so I'll just be quiet now.
Yeah, I realize we were trying to stay focused on this, and it's bleeding over into the next item, but Councilmember Sac?
Okay. So I'm going to try and focus on attachment one, the strategic priorities. But there is some crossover. And I'm going to agree with a majority of what's said in that there's ways to rebrand these, almost, these buckets. And I would, I would like transportation strategic priority, as we've already said, highlighting specifically under those, some thought towards a transportation demand management plan, and a community shuttle could be folded into that. I'm looking at specific ideas in Mountain View where they have a shuttle that they pay into, and I see that not as a separate standalone, but maybe as another idea that we can look at as a town under our TDMP that future development can pay into, that would help support our strategic priorities. With this one, I do believe we have to be nimble. I think the example that was shown with OBAG and with Measure B, there's always opportunities to hear of funding and having to be able to be flexible to accommodate those very random requests sometimes we hear as we're out regionally. So I don't want to limit us too much, understanding that it's a high priority that we should be able to address. You know, with regards to the economic vitality, I agree, we don't need a plan. I think it'd almost broaden that to almost say, "Community vitality." Because as we've been talking about last year, about placemaking and getting people into town to rediscover, whether it's our downtown or our commercial business districts, just coming to town, staying in town, and then identifying all the great things, our businesses, our restaurants. I think there's a certain amount of vitality that events bring to town, whether it's music, whether it's park benches. And I think I'd like it under that entire umbrella. Some things I think that we do need to remove, the alcohol policy, the complete streets, I think, and as well as just a refocus on what our general plan actually is. And let's, I think the action items that are in our existing can definitely be folded into the work that we'll be doing with the update. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Okay. So I think we're sort of getting most of what people's thoughts are on this, that I think you're hearing most people agreeing removing some, maybe there's a little differences, and thinking about renaming some, but that may also go in sort of into part of the next discussion. I'll just ask the vice mayor if he wanted to make any comments on this before I kind of let us move into the next section.
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Yes, I concur with most of what's been said. Eliminate the alcohol policy update. The complete streets, I think, again, is kind of going to be folded into a number of other things. You know, when I see install bicycle and pedestrian improvements, I would like to look at things like Blossom Hill Road in between Short Road and Union Avenue, perhaps putting in a bike lane there on the right side or a sidewalk. And Los Gatos Almanin Road expanding. I think we've done a great job with Los Gatos Boulevard, but expanding to further reaches of the town with things like the green bike lanes and the striping that we've done. And that's my brief comments on this section.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from staff? Is everything clear so far? Okay, so let's move on to the next piece, which is to really, you know, staff called it the new ideas, and I think it's really, we've touched on maybe repackaging some of what's already there, and then also talk about what really are new ideas. And maybe some of the new ideas actually fit into some of the repackaging, and some of the new ideas really are a new item. Councilmember Spector, first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know that staff has suggested three, and as I was adding items as people spoke and scratching them as you identified them, I don't know how many I have, so we'll just go from there. My... My, one of my top priorities has been and continues to be the Danville bus model. I understand that that might still be on the list, but I'm going to say it again. So the Danville school bus model. And another related item is a, a shuttle throughout town. But a shuttle generally and also something that can be used by seniors. Not just seniors, not like the ride process that we just started a few months ago in Saratoga. But a shuttle that goes throughout town that because it's there, seniors would be able to use. Because I think one, I personally think one of the bigger issues in our town for seniors is social isolation. So I believe that a shuttle which seniors could also use would, would help address that. A couple of things that I know are personal to me is I, I know staff is working on them, but we have the pedestrian bridge over the freeway. And I have been looking for lighting on that and also a completion of the artwork. And I know there was a contribution to that and I know that there's CIP funding. So that is a personal priority for me. And I actually think it has been on the capital improvement budget in the past. And then another one is the Humane Society had monies that they asked, they wanted to contribute them to the town. And so they asked me for my suggestion, I talked with staff. And the suggestion was that when that tree was, fell down in front of the library, there was no shading for animals. And so that money that the Humane Society donated to the town went into, as staff says, that bucket. And we don't have the shading constructed yet. And so that would be another priority for me.
Town manager?
So those are all great things. And as, as we've discussed, the, some of those are already in our budgets. The pedestrian bridge lighting and the artwork, the Humane Society shade for our pets, and then the Danville bus model. So those are already ongoing. What, if I heard correctly, really the, the, one of the newer ideas was really exploring the community shuttle. So community shuttle would be the, the newer idea. But I think understanding, and I think the team heard loud and clear what, what the priorities are, even if they're already budgeted and in work programs.
And it's okay to reaffirm again our priorities of things that are already on the list, too.
Absolutely, yes.
Councilmember Saak?
Okay, so, so similar to what Councilmember Specter did, I'm going to reiterate that for me, under the larger transportation strategic priority is the congestion management relief, the Danville traffic, school busing. But I do like the idea of how do we utilize a community shuttle as a larger TDMP that we can, that future development can pay into, understanding that could be, whether it's future development or alternate sources of funding, but that's what I'm looking for there. We talked about the community vitality, looking at how we can partner with certain events to make them into townwide events. And what I really want to focus on this year is not make it just for one part of town. We have a, I want to make sure that we are very thoughtful, that we promote events throughout all of Los Gatos, so. Land use streamlining, I think we heard that the banners would be helpful. But I also think we've discussed just land use processes. I think a flow chart to show our decision making and why, whether it's state regulated or our own ordinances, I think would be helpful so that we can then be mindful of how we'd like to change, if any, any of those processes. I would like to add pace in there. I think it, I think it would be a small, easily manageable project. But I understand that may not always be the case. And I'd like to bring back the comprehensive permitted plan for parking surrounding high school that we brought forward last year. And I know that it was somewhat controversial. But if we can try and at least let our partners at the high school know that this is coming back so that there's ample opportunity for them to weigh in as well. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Oh, actually, I have one more, I'm sorry.
Okay, go ahead.
And I know it's folded in, but I do want to call out community emergency response. I know that we're folding that in, but specifically number eight, that was to utilize CERT members for special events and trainings. I think we have a real opportunity and we had a high number of people just certify. And I'd hate to lose that enthusiasm by not utilizing existing and new. And so somehow fold that enthusiasm into ongoing events so that we can parlay it into other larger community CERT events that we're thinking about in the future.
Councilmember Jensen?
Start out easily by agreeing with two things that Ms. Saak emphasized. One being the streamlining for land use. And to me, that's very comprehensive. It could be definitions, which is in the, what, third bullet on our first page. So it's split on our staff report between businesses and just land use. To me, it's all the same. But the flow chart that was mentioned would be good because to me, if we did that, we could end up actually freeing up council and staff time if we're not duplicating efforts and going round and round on particular projects. And if we can get things through more efficiently, I think it's better for everybody in town. Business owners, residents, everyone. So I would like to see that get done. I would like to see, I like Ms. Saak's idea of community vitality versus just downtown. But if I fold the downtown into traffic, I, I am a champion of the one-way street pilot. I think we could do it and just see how it works. And if I only get to get, choose three, I also want to bring back the comprehensive parking plan that we worked on and was actually passed by the council before the council changed its mind. But it does fold in and did fold in the things that the residents of Loma Alta said tonight. And I think it's basically done, so it's an easy one for us to do. Guess I only get three, but.
Go ahead and give us her fourth.
Well, on the general plan update, it's not on the list. But there's many things that are contained in the new ideas. Objective and subjective standards for housing, different ordinances, different ways that we define things. For example, definitions. To me, all of those could be folded into a general plan update. So if we have a section on whatever it is, we could, we could use that update to address many of the ideas that are here. Like what's a definition of something for land use, or how something works, or what's the priority for housing, or what's the standards that we're using. So that we hopefully really honestly do have the universal standard that then gets now filtered down through our other policies and regulations and ordinances so that we can do things in a coordinated fashion.
So I guess a question for the town manager. You're kind of tracking what are new ideas and she gave you her three or four. But did she really get three or four new ideas, or did she get to have more?
Do I get more?
Well, we had one council member who really only gave us one, one council member who gave us more than three. So if, if there are some, I think the, the idea of using the potential new strategic priorities when we come back to you on February 6th to discuss the general plan update is a great idea. So that way you can help us identify what's the focus for the update. So that's something that we can carry forward. So we did get three from Councilmember Jensen. If you have any others?
I don't want to limit you too much, okay? All right, so Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. So on attachment four, page one, streamline the land use processes for businesses as well as our overall streaming for, of land use processes for everybody else. Refresh the downtown with the physical improvements. And then going on to page two, annexations, those are my three.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and give you my input. Again, it's a little bit confusing what's new and what's not. I like the reframing of the idea into the transportation. And I throw in that in my mind, the TDM, we've talked about, you know, a TDM plan in town. I think that is new and I've actually been in your office and talked to you before about that. And using it maybe to help finance a shuttle. So I like the community shuttle, which is, I guess, also new that I put in this transportation. Bussing models already, we're working on it, so that's not new. But I, I definitely put that in, into transportation. I like reframing some of what we have here in the economic vitality. We've heard, you know, certainly things about park benches are, you know, I like those ideas. I'm interested in the one-way street pilot. Some people are calling it a parking plan, I think that's really already being worked on. I think that the garage that we're working on is a key point because if we can get some more spaces built, it frees us up easily to do things like parklets or maybe the sidewalks get a little bit larger and take up some of the street spaces. So I'm interested in, in the physical improvements, which I guess is kind of on the, on the new list. Also as part of the economic vitality, I mentioned, I've mentioned this before, I think we should look to, to partner more with the chamber. And I've talked about, I'd like to see a budget item where staff, you know, council will say, okay, you have X thousands of dollars, work with the chamber and you decide what you think are good events to help them, help finance them with the idea of economic vitality. So I guess that's also kind of a new idea, maybe I'm way past three, I don't know, or maybe we combine this in one. Also on my list, also as part of the economic vitality, streamlining the process, we've, we've mentioned that. On my big, so those were, I don't know, sort of repackaging with some new ideas added. On my big ones, I like emergency preparedness, we're already doing a number of things. You know, continuing with the staff plan. On your list of things, I particularly liked things like, you, you mentioned adding CERT regular activities. You know, the thing about, a lot of people sign up and get trained for CERT, but then it's hard to stay engaged because nothing's going on. I read that item as a way to get CERT more engaged and more ready for, for that emergency when it comes. You remember when, if we have a true disaster, the professionals are going to be busy. So CERT members can help. But the other piece of that is I would really like us to try to find more ways or programs to get residents to prepare. I think I heard that the police department went up and gave, I don't know if it was a seminar or a discussion with the College Avenue people about what, what they do in case of a major fire. I think that was a great idea. Maybe making it known we can do things like that, especially, you know, certainly fire is, you know, the, the fire zone, we have a lot of fire, high-risk fire zones in town. So that's certainly one thing. I bet there's some more ideas. I was contacted by a resident in town that's heavily involved. I don't know what his rank is in the Red Cross and wanted to do more with us. So I'd like to explore that. My third, what I kind of calling big new items would, is the, I put on the list is the senior programs. We are doing some things. You asked about, you know, my feeling was more things on the programs. I think it may be difficult for us to finance, and I didn't hear anybody else put it on the list, finance a coordinator. But the idea of possibly funding more of LGS rec for more programs. Also like the idea of getting our library staff more involved in, in those items. So it was mentioned, general plan and doing several of the streamlining ideas for general plan. I'm a little bit worried that that, what that means is we do the general plan and then we have some action items. So three, four years from now, we're now doing some of these streaming, streamline items. I think that I'd like to see it be done earlier. One of the concerns is January 1st with all the new housing laws that are going into effect, we lose a lot of our ability to be subjective about applications. So I, I see a need to look at maybe putting some more objective things in our, in probably our ordinances in, in order to address, you know, specifically things like, the new laws say if somebody brings two houses, we really can't reject it for subjective reasons like the windows overlooking somebody's yard. Well, that's a big one. I think it's useful to think about, are there things we can put in that say any, you know, I don't know what the answer is, but something like, well, if you've got a, a second story, the windows can't do X or Y or Z, or something like that. I don't know what the answers are. By putting some more of these objective standards, I think it makes it easier to streamline also. So I, I see those as possibly enabling each other. Mr. Leonardi's mentioned, so I'm way beyond three. Mr. Leonardi's mentioned annexations. And I realize that that's really a heavy CDD thing and they won't have the bandwidth for it, but I wanted to mention it anyway. It's, it's a way to make government more efficient. We have a lot of neighborhoods that, with fingers of Los Gatos and county, which means both the sheriff and our police department have to drive down it. Why do you need both sets of police driving down? Means you got to have two sets of garbage trucks driving down. And we heard complaints earlier in the year about on Loma, you know, they were complaining that they had three garbage trucks on Monday and then three again on Friday, backing up beep, beep, beeping, you know. So these are examples of how it's inefficient. There's certainly, you know, if we annex some of these broken up neighborhoods, it, it also brings more revenue into the town because we get the property tax instead of the county. So there's some advantages there. But certainly makes government more efficient. Probably not on our list for this year, but I wanted to mention it anyway. A couple of small things, you know, I don't want it to be my, one of my three. But getting back to the residential parking around the high school, I think we could do it quick, bring back what we had before, don't make a big deal out of it. So I, I, it's not really a big priority, but I think we should look at that. I like the idea of increasing more temporary banner sign spots in town. Maybe that goes with the economic vitality, maybe not. We, we really only have three or four available now, one of which is kind of the lodge site, which is going to go, probably go away when that gets developed. And I think we should at least address the, the question about the fences for the non-hillsides. That could be a very quick item that's been requested of us. That's the end of my list. Any council members like to, Councilmember Specter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to follow up on what some of you have said. With regard to the permit parking, I don't know what form it will be coming back to us. But just so Loma Alta is folded in to whatever we have before us. And then with regard to the general plan, I do understand that that could be a project in the future or a long-term project. But to the extent that it encompasses ordinances or, or plans, the statutes for objective standards and some of the things that the mayor was just referencing, I think that and things like emergency preparedness and fire, I would like to do that sooner rather than later.
Any other comments by council members? Councilmember, Vice Mayor Leonardi?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. Just a quick comment on what the mayor said about annexation. Has there been any work done on that in the past? And if so, how close are we, how far are we to having some information on that?
Thank you, Joel Paulson, Community Development Director. So as folks are probably aware, I believe at least twice in the last 10 or plus years, the matter has gone to vote. I will actually be meeting with LAFCO on, in early January and be discussing the possibilities if we get some direction. if we get some direction, even absent direction. They should be able to quickly identify which annexation pockets can be done without protest proceedings. So we at least want to know which pockets we can take without that option before we get going too far. But it really will be a brand-new effort of outreach to all of the pockets and a big information effort as well. Now, we have some previous, you know, frequently asked question brochures from the last election, I think I've seen, that we'll use in conjunction with the county to update, to illustrate our current regulations and those differences, which usually come up to be issues for folks in the county who may not be interested in annexing to the town.
Thank you.
And I'll just add a little bit of that to that. I am a LAFCO commissioner, so one of the policies that LAFCO takes very seriously is they'd like to see for the efficiency of government, annexing the pockets in town. In fact, we've denied requests for annexing outside of pockets into cities because those cities weren't working on annexing their pockets. They felt it was that important. So maybe they can give us some help to make our process easier. I don't know if they have a lot of money, but I know we, you know, we need material to explain to people, maybe they already have some. So there, when you talk to them, there may be opportunities to get their help to make it less expensive for us.
Thank you, Mayor. We'll also be working with the county as well, because they're generally interested in relinquishing those pockets when they have that opportunity.
All right, thank you. So does staff feel like they've got enough for this chunk number two?
We have, thank you.
Okay, so then let's move on to the third piece, which is our list of ordinances from the town attorney. Do we have something we can visually put up? And we have a question from Councilmember Saak.
So trying to be mindful of one of our core goals of fiscal stability, with the things that we've identified, at least that have received the majority, will we get a sense of how much this will cost us prior to it being detailed out in the budget?
Right, so that's the purpose of the February 20th meeting, is that you've laid out a lot of ideas for us, so we're going to look at them and organize them a little bit more. Do, we may have some options for a couple of them, such as the physical improvements downtown. There's probably some lower-cost options as well as higher-cost options, so that way we can narrow the list even further as part of the budget direction for May.
Okay.
Okay, so hopefully everybody has read the priority list. I guess the question really is, and this is by priority suggestion from our town attorney, really the question for everybody is, is this the order that we like? Is there something we want added to the list, I guess? Mr. Schultz, did you have any more to add to this?
Just that it really didn't change much from last year. Obviously, we've taken items off of there, the accessory dwelling unit, the smoking ordinance, so I've just kind of reframed them a little bit. Wireless, I think, was fourth on that list, so we didn't get to it. So obviously, I just put that as number one right now. And it's more staff-driven, most of these. I don't think this year we have as many mandates as we have before, but certainly if something props up during the year that becomes a mandate, that obviously is going to jump ahead of everything else if we have to catch up with state or federal law. So, you know, it's just if you have any questions about them, or we usually try to tackle them down the list, there's no way I get to all 10 of these, so they just continually will kind of go over until the next year. We try to, I try to at least get through four, maybe six, you know, depending on the year's scheduling and the agendas and how long they are.
So, and I think Councilmember Spector earlier suggested that the high priorities were the ones that were state mandated. Could you let us know which on this list are state or county or anybody else mandated?
The only one on that list at this point in time would be the wireless.
Okay.
The first one.
So councilmembers, do you have any questions? Councilmember Spector?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, my first question has just been answered. I note that the drone ordinance is number eight, and a recent experience that I had at the Levi's Stadium, where a drone flew over and dropped items onto the people in the audience of the Levi's Stadium, made me aware, made me more aware of the potential danger from drones. And I note that's number eight. I'm not going to suggest that it be some other number, but it is something that could cause injury to our citizens and to citizens generally.
And that's a perfect example, you know, it is a dynamic list. It could easily prop up more. I think drone was probably, I think, six, I dropped it down because we did get some complaints the year before about drones, but we didn't quite get there. In the last year, we haven't had any or very little complaints about that. So certainly, if we receive additional complaints from citizens regarding drones and that we don't have anything that addresses whatsoever, in this case, quite a bit of it is preempted by federal law, but certainly we could put parameters on the use of them and where they are and what needs to be done, and who the operator has to be. But again, yes, yes, we do occasionally receive them, we had an influx of them, I think, a couple of years ago, but not this last year, and certainly, like I said, it's a dynamic list to where, you know, I might, if we received quite a few, I'd say to the mayor, hey, I want to put this ahead on the agenda and get it done.
Councilmember Saak?
I know, I haven't gotten any specifics, but I do remember with drone, getting a couple of concerns from parents about drones taking pictures in their backyard, and I don't know if anything has come of that, if there have been any further complaints, but I put that in the public, I don't know even how to put these together, but I have been hearing of just privacy concerns, and so I don't know if that's anything that you want to consider when looking at this.
Councilmember Spector?
Thank you. In listening to Ms. Saak and my experience at Levi's Stadium, possibly to ask the town attorney to prioritize these by injury to, potential injury to people, and then potential injury to property.
Go ahead, Councilmember Saak.
And then I wanted to just get more information on number 10, the motor vehicle and traffic ordinance. It does seem, you know, we talk about governance and efficiency, it does seem silly that we have requirements in there, such as the chief of police approving traffic signs. Is it really that outdated that we should be looking at it through a refreshed set of views?
Again, yes, it is outdated, and changes need to be made to it. It's just that issue's only come up once, and so it's stayed at number 10, and hopefully, you know, through our work product, we can make those changes. It really, that's not, number 10 is not a time-consuming one, it's just really finding the ability to get it on an agenda and place a number of hours to do it.
Okay, so then let me ask it in a different way.
The difference between like doing the wireless and making sure you're in compliance with state and federal law and all the little nuances is many, many hours, because it's so unique to our community and what we're trying to achieve, as opposed to the strategic strikes in a vehicle.
So let me ask that in a different way. Given our councilmember Spector's reframing of, is there, are there any ordinances that affect public health or public safety?
Sure.
And given all our traffic concerns, are there any changes to our traffic ordinance that helps us as we try and improve flow over the summer or over these high-peak traffic periods?
No, that would, that part of it.
No, that does not fall here.
But the injury to people or property would redo these, you know, our internal purchase policy and manual, and our claims settlement ordinance would probably fall further down. And coming up would be, you know, the weed abatement, obviously, that has some issues with, you know, fire protection, and the drone ordinances and those would go to the higher level because they do deal with personal property, along with our public nuisance ordinance, which some of that could be lumped in with it.
Okay, any more comments? I have trouble changing the order of this list. The longer I look at it, I don't think I need to change anything. I don't, sure, I'm hearing anybody else say anything different either.
I think one of the items that's been on this list that I think we do need to tackle is the short-term rental ordinance, because we are getting more and more people that are on Airbnb and on VRBO, doing their short-term rentals. We do send out letters saying they're not allowed, but we do need to address that issue with you to determine whether you want to allow them or stick with not allowing them, and then also other issues associated with that that might be revenue generating. So sometime this year, that one certainly will be coming forward, because I think it has more implications, maybe not from, but it does have some property rights, because it does affect the neighborhood compatibility issues. So that one certainly will come forward this next year.
And number two is an important one, to help you do your job for dealing with the hoarders and the negligence of property that neighbors complain about and so forth.
Correct. Neighborhood compatibility issues are top priority on code enforcement.
Vice Mayor, did you want to make, nope? Everybody's good, okay. Well, I think we're done with this item. Good job, I guess we like it as is. Mr. Assistant Town Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given the interest in emergency preparedness, I would like to just take this opportunity. The staff memo highlights CERT as one of the programs, but I would be remiss to not say that we have a multitude of other volunteer citizens that engage us through our DART program, our ARES RACs, our VIP program. And every time you see the term CERT, you can assume that that is synonymous with us engaging all those other programs, too.
Sounds good to me. Any other comments? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor Rennie. One final comment I forgot to mention before. When it comes to cut-through traffic, when we had the meeting with State Senator Bell, he mentioned that in Campbell, they coordinated the signal timing on Bascom and Winchester Boulevard, so the traffic would flow when Highway 17 got clogged. And I noticed, you know, on Los Gatos Boulevard, as well as Winchester Boulevard, particularly the area over there by the Netflix campus, courtside, et cetera, I think we could benefit by coordinating the signals. I know some of them are owned by Caltrans or whatnot, some of them are owned by us, but if we can work to get the flow of the traffic during, well, really, any time of day, the commute hours, the beach traffic, or, you know, when we have those storms in Highway 17 gets backed up, it would be very beneficial to our community. So I just wanted to add that as one of my, on my wish list.
Okay, any further comments? Anything else from staff? So, sounds like we should be adjourned then. Thank you.